Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of August 16, 2021. In accordance with L.B. 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant then should make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, if they're representing an organization or group, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue that's not on the agenda nor planned for a future agenda. So that meeting will be on August 9th and August 30th of this month. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today is the Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bowers and members of the council. Thank you for having me here today for another one of our Mayor's Award of Excellence. This one is for the month of July 2020. We're still playing catch-up on 2020. And this award is presented to a team from Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, Tan Pham of the Engineering Services Division, and Trevor Hansen of the Watershed Management Division. And these two gentlemen were nominated by Rock Kritzke of the Watershed Management Division in the categories of loss prevention and productivity for creating an electronic application process for watershed permit applications for residential construction sites. And each year, the city receives an average of 800 to 900 permit applications for construction or earthwork that disturbs less than one acre. And here's how the old system worked. The building and safety department accepted the written application form and entered partial information into the online system. LTU would then pick up the paper form and send it by inter-office mail to another LTU employee. That employee would scan the form and input the file into the on-base system. At that point, another LTU employee would finish the data entry into the Acela system. And the original form was then routed to Watershed Management to notify them of the application. Okay, that's the old system. This entire process took four to five days, and it wasn't until that point in the process that Watershed Management could begin to review the applications. Trevor had previously researched a process to allow permit holders to submit the required inspection documentation electronically, and he was able to use that template to create an electronic permit application process. Tan is LTU's Acela software coordinator, and he customized the permit application process based on Watershed Management's paper form. The result of this team's work is an easy-to-use electronic application for customers. And Trevor and Tan validated the process, and they wrote clear, step-by-step web instructions for applicants. Those seeking permits can now complete the application process from any PC, including one that's now available near the building and safety counter. The elimination of paper forms means that hard copies no longer need to be maintained. The new application system also eliminated about 2,000 hours of staff time annually. And in most cases, applicants can have their permits reviewed and approved in one day. Kritzke said the successful electronic permit application process came to fruition after many hours of work and some really creative customization of the Acela software. So I hope you'll please join me in thanking and congratulating Tan Pham and Trevor Hansen for their hard work and commitment to the city of Lincoln, and I'll ask them to come up and receive their awards. You two could please remain up here. I'm going to invite LTU Director Liz Elliott to come forward to say a few words about this team.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to be here to recognize both Tan and Trevor. Because of their initiative and innovation, we were able to not only make the process easier for us here for the city, but to ultimately achieve our goal of making things easier for our customer, the public. And these two exemplify our goals here at LTU, and that's to find ways to make things better for the public. And both of you are extraordinary members of LTU. Thank you for all of your hard work and for always trying to find those ways to make things better. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Elliott. Tan, would you like to come up and say a few words and maybe introduce your family if they're here with you?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor Laren, and thank you, the city council, and thank you for the opportunity to work for the city. I appreciate this award very much, and I have my family with me here, Lynn, my wife, and three boys. So thank you for everything.
Trevor, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Yes, good afternoon. I just want to thank the mayor for presenting these, and to Liz and Donna and Ben for making the city such a great place to work. I also want to thank Rock Kritzke for nominating us. Rock has been a great mentor to me, and I appreciate everything he does. And I also want to give a shout-out to the rest of the Watershed staff team. This was a team effort, and it couldn't have been done without them. So again, thank you so much.
And thank you. Anyone else have any comments? We'll take this outside for pictures.
Councilman Cho.
2,000 hours saved?
Annually.
Annual. You know that, yeah. Side work years, 2,080 hours, so you've just saved a year. Wow.
Thank you so much for your work and dedication to the city and making sure that our government works effectively and efficiently. So thank you so much on behalf of the council.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, Section 1.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can vote on these items. Item 1A is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended June 30, 2021, introduced by Choob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call a roll?
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is reappointing Tracy Edgerton to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for a term to expire August 24, 2027, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is appointing Kathy Ashley to the Star Train Advisory Board for a term to expire October 20, 2023, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion?
Is Kathy in the audience?
No.
Oh, no, there she is. Did you want to come up and say something?
Oh, yeah, please, come forward. Is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Members of the council, my name is Kathy Ashley, and I recently found out that the Star Train Advisory Board is in definite need of a new board member. And I have the attributes that I think would benefit the city and the Star Train team across the board. I've lived in Lincoln for about 13 years. The majority of that time, I've been dealing with severe health problems and disabilities, which has prevented me from furthering a 34-year career in financial management and accounting. I worked over 13 years for CPA firms in two different states. I've traveled the world, with the exception of only two continents. Beyond that, I went to private sector corporations, as well as publicly traded corporations off of NASDAQ and SC, um, the New York Stock Exchange, excuse me. For the last 13 years, I've been fighting severe medical problems, and as a result, about the only thing I've been allowed to do is volunteer work. And I think one of the best things that I can do to feel useful and productive is to contribute to my community. And through that process, that's why I submitted my application to serve on the Star Train Board. I have been a rider of both the city buses, as well as the Handy Van. The city buses, I rode for about five and a half years, and the Handy Van, just, it'll be five years here in October. So I bring a lot of strength and knowledge of your system into that process, and I think I can contribute with my professional array of experience as well. I thank you for your consideration for my application. Are there any questions?
Councilwoman Beckus?
We would just like to thank you for your service very, very much. We look forward to your contributions, and thank you for giving back to the city that we all call home. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my home, too.
Any further questions or comments from the council?
No.
Thank you so much for your service, and thank you so much for agreeing to take this on. We're lucky to have you serving in this capacity.
Okay, thank you.
So that was moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That ends our consent agenda. Move to Section 2, our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling items 2A and 2B together. Application of Virtually Unique Boxes Inc., new business as Virtually Unique Boxes for Class J liquor license located at 2020 Southwest 5th Street, Suite 2, and the related manager application of Christie Unique.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item?
I'm Christie Unique with Virtually Unique Boxes, and this is my husband Scott, and we are co-owners in Virtually Unique. And we are obviously drafting a unique concept for the area for a subscription box focused on local Nebraska wineries and breweries and offering subscriptions within the state of Nebraska and shipping the product to them in a course with COVID. This is a unique way for those businesses to reach other clients and customers.
Perfect. I think that sounds really interesting. Would you be willing to please state your, uh, your business address, please?
Yep. 2020 Southwest 5th Street, Suite 2, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Are there any questions from the council this time? Councilwoman Raybold?
Can you tell us a little bit about the special permit that is required from the planning department?
Yes. So currently, the building that we are located in is not zoned for liquor sales, so we have applied for a special permit to do that for off-sale liquors. So we will not be selling any liquor on the premise, nor will we be serving any liquor on the premise. It will be all distributed and shipped out.
And have you heard from the planning department?
Yes, our application was submitted last week on Friday, and I know the deadline was this week on Wednesday for that application, and we'll be reviewed at the end of the month.
Okay.
And you'll get to see us again.
Councilwoman Washington?
Good afternoon, thanks for coming down, and thanks for being so creative and having an entrepreneurial spirit. I had asked Investigator Parker about this because I hadn't seen a Class J come through before, so you're the first.
Yes, I know.
In the state, and so I have a, I have a couple of questions for you. One is in following up on Councilwoman Raybold's questions. Have you talked to any of your neighbors about your, your business, and do you have any feedback from them on the alcohol sales?
Like neighbors within the industrial park that we're located in?
Yeah, like those neighbors.
The current landlord of our property is completely open and approving of the permit, but there's also Backswing Brewery right next door.
Okay.
So there's already liquor sales off the premise, actually, for that property. So we're just located right across the street.
Right across the street. And then, secondly, because this is a, a, a unique program, you're the first J, how will you be doing your accounting, and who is responsible for accepting those reports? How does that happen?
So all the financials we deal with, but we also, HPE Accounting Firm is our accounting firm that we utilize for our businesses. And so we will closely monitor, because we are a promotional product company, and we also offer customized gift boxes as well that we ship throughout the United States. So for this sector, it's just here in Nebraska, so we'll watch it, and if we feel like we're going to be over the 20% of what that license entails, then we will be applying for a different liquor license at that point. But it was with the guidance of the Liquor Commission to apply for this particular liquor license, is why we did.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll be calling items 2C and 2D together. Application of FuCorr Inc., new business as Harry's Wonder Bar for a Class C liquor license located at 1621 O Street, and the related manager application of Michael Ritter.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Item 2E is application of Bourbon Entertainment LLC, doing business as Bourbon Theater for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 556 feet by 525 feet at N Street between 14th and 16th Streets on September 17, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. till 11:59 p.m.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Sean Reagan, Bourbon Theater, 1415 O Street, and I was here just, I think, a couple of weeks ago for a similar thing, and we have another outdoor show. It's coming up here on, uh, the date's escaping me, I want to say it's the 17th or 16th of September. It's a Friday night. It's a rock show this time, and I, if it goes half as well as the one that we had this past Friday night, it'll be a success. To date, I, I heard from, we're right next, our footprint is the Pershing Center, right there, the old Rib Fest footprint. I did hear from Scott at the Lincoln Community Foundation this morning. He said there's absolutely no problems with, with them, so it sounds like everything went good, and we just hope it works out again. Uh, any questions?
No. Any questions from the council this time? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Mr. Reagan, I have one question, because your application says that your alternate location is PBA?
I think it will be, yeah, for this show. The one we had last Friday, I think PBA was being utilized by Graduation, maybe, and in addition to that, there's also the Garth Spectacle that we were all dealing with last weekend. But typically, when we do these shows, we partner them with SMG. This, the last one that we did last weekend was the first in five years that we have not partnered with SMG, and that's because they were just busy. So most of our shows, the majority, the rain location has been PBA. We did have one earlier this year, which we moved to Pinewood, and we've used PBA, I think, twice in the past, or once or twice in the past for other shows that have been rained out or some other sort of weather issue. So, yeah, I think we're lucky enough this time that we do have a backup location.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Take care.
Item 2F is application of White Elm Brewing Company LLC, doing business as White Elm Brewing for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 27 feet by 21 feet at 2717 South 8th Street, Suite 1, on August 28, September 17, and October 23, from 12:00 a.m. till 11:59 p.m.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Colby Wood, 3171 Van Dorn Street in Lincoln. I am the managing partner of White Elm Brewing Company. We are looking to utilize about three parking spaces of outdoor space for a bicycle swap that we have planned going on the 28th of this month, and the subsequent events would be our Oktoberfest on the 17th of September, as well as our anniversary in October. So this is a bit of a proof-of-concept thing for us. You know, we are sort of fingers crossed that we can have a more permanent outdoor space in the future, but this gives us an opportunity to utilize a little bit of the outdoor space that we do have while the sun's shining, so to speak. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
Good afternoon. Roy Hillen, 2750 South 13th Street, which is Oto and Pawnee Land. Being someone who lives in the neighborhood, I am very thankful for the opportunity to speak favorably of the White Elm. I think this is a good idea, good concept, and a good way to look forward with potentials for being outside, especially given the current situation with COVID. So please, give your support, and I will continue to support my local brewery. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Hill? Seeing none, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Johnson, when I was coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items 2A through 2F.
Moved by Councilman Choob?
I will second that, but I have a special request that we maybe separate 2A and 2B out.
Sure.
And vote separately on that.
Let me just, let's, shall I make a motion that we approve items 2A and 2B?
And I will second that with a stipulation that the special permit be granted before the license would be issued.
I'm okay with that. I think that's probably, I don't know if that's a procedure or not. Clerk, would that happen? Will we issue the license before the permit's granted?
No, if there's a special permit that's required, then we wait for the special permit to be approved, and then we also notify the commission's office as well with the resolution. The resolution itself should state that the special permit is needed.
Councilman Choob, would you like to make that part of your friendly amendment into including Councilwoman Raybold's ask?
I think that's, yes. Just make that part of the record.
Okay, so moved by Councilwoman Choob, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Ward?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We can move on to Section 3, our public hearing resolution. Item 3A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July 16 through July 31, 2021, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
We'll do the public hearing first?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. If you want to go, please state your name and address, and there will be five minutes to speak on whatever you wish to speak on as it relates to the public or the pending claims. When you hear a beep go off, that means it's like a one-minute warning.
Oh, okay. My name is Shantae Hoffman, and on June 15, I was coming down, headed south on 48th, and I turned right on Highway 2 to head towards the pool at Star City, and they had just repaved this road. There was construction from 48th and Highway 2 to 48th and Pioneers, I believe, around this time, and when I had turned, there was paint spilled all over the road, and it splattered all up onto my car. I had not seen the paint until it was too late, and somebody driving by had also helped warm me of the paint all over my car as well. And so I had taken pictures of the spilled paint, and I am just asking to be reimbursed for the spill.
If you want to put your pictures on the overhead projector, that might help us.
Uh, there was construction from 48th and Highway 2 to 48th and Pioneers, I believe, around this time. And, um, when I had turned, there was paint spilled all over the road, and it splattered all up onto my car. I had not seen the paint until it was too late, and somebody driving by had also helped warm me of the paint all over my car as well. Um, and so, I had taken pictures of the spilled paint, and I am just asking it to be reimbursed for the spill.
If you want to put your pictures on the, uh, overhead projector, that might help us, kind of see, and if you want to, feel free to kind of walk us through, uh, and highlight, uh, what you'd like us to look at.
Okay. Okay, so this is, uh, 40th and Highway 2. I had gone back and taken a picture of the paint spill. Um, so it was all over the road. I couldn't have, I couldn't have escaped it. It covered all that side of the road. And then, um, I have more pictures of that as well, but that pretty much gives you the gist of that area. And then, um, I had taken pictures after they had gotten a lot of it off, but this is my car. It was all my wheel bearings. It had splattered all up onto my car as well. I had taken it to Ming's, and, um, I just, I brought more pictures. I don't know how many you want to see of the, the paint in my wheel bearings. And then, I had just brought the receipt of Ming's as well for them to get the paint off my car. It's just kind of small, but. $214.50.
Will you please state your address, just so we can get it for our record?
Oh, my personal address?
Yeah.
4433 F Street, Apartment 107, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68510.
Perfect. So, uh, how this process will work is I'll ask if the council has any questions for you, um, and then we'll, uh, invite up, um, our city attorney if, uh, the council has any questions for the city attorney, and then you then have a chance to provide a rebuttal. So, if there's, uh, something that either the city attorney says, or something, you know, whatever, uh, then, um, that'd be your opportunity at that time. Are there any questions?
No.
Okay, perfect. Um, are there any questions from the council at this time? Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Do you know, uh, where the spilled paint came from, or, uh, did you see the vehicle that's dropped the paint, or?
I didn't assume that the, a vehicle had dropped the paint, since there was just been, that road had just been paved. I figured they had been painting the lines in the road, or where it was spilled exactly was where the paved road was. So, that's, I thought it was the city.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, real quick, the spill itself, was it on Highway 2, or was it on 48th Street?
It was on the exact corner of 48th and Highway 2, right on that bike trail, on the sidewalk.
Okay, right by the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Any further questions from the council? Councilman Washington?
Um, can we see the, the picture again? When you say it was on the, it wasn't on the sidewalk, right? You said?
Yes, it was on the sidewalk and splattered all onto the road. So, it looked like the, it began on the sidewalk, the spill. And there was a lid, um, close by as well. Oh, here is the lid.
And what direction are we looking right now? Pardon me.
Um, right now, this right here, this right here is 48th. So, this is the crosswalk to 48th. So, this is 40, this is Highway 2, and then, I was facing south.
Okay. And there's a lid?
Yeah, the lid is right here, which was just like...
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council at this time?
Just those staff.
Okay. Would you be willing to, uh, leave your pictures up?
Oh, yeah.
That's fine, I was just kind of curious about the, that's fine, thanks so much.
Okay.
Um, I'd, I'd like to invite up either Dr. Elliott or, uh, city attorney, uh, Christie, whichever would like to approach.
Good afternoon, Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities. We did have a chance to look at this, and I understand Ms. Hoffman's frustration of just randomly seeing this paint all over Highway 2. We did go back and check, um, a couple of different things. We did not have any of our traffic spray workers on Highway 2 that day, nor, uh, on 50th, uh, on 48th at that point. So, we did pull our GPS and AVL system. The other thing, obviously, with our striping trucks, they're preloaded, we don't have cans, those types of things, that would paint. So, we just have the truck, it's filled up at the shop, and we, we go that way. So, those are two indications that show that it's not from a city vehicle that this fell. I do suspect that there was someone driving along Highway 2 who lost a paint bucket, and it fell off that truck and spilled all over the road. We also checked to see if we had any uplink or calls in for, uh, road defects, like a pothole type thing. We did not receive any complaints, given that this was wet when Ms. Hoffman drove by. I assume it happened shortly after it spilled. Obviously, if we do have defects like this, any spills, you know, sometimes it's a semi-truck that gets in an accident and spills, or things like this. Our team does go out and help clean those up, but we also are allowed a reasonable time upon notice, and we did not have notice on this. So, we did not get our, we did not have crews out in that area to clean it up prior to Ms. Hoffman running into it, simply just because we did not have notification on that, so.
Any questions for Dr. Elliott at this time?
No.
So, any, so essentially, what you're saying is that a paint can probably didn't fall off a, a, a truck, because there was no trucks, or whatever the appropriate vehicle's called, that went down in that area?
That is correct, and we also didn't have any of our contractors in that area that would have actually had paint. All of the striping in the city is done by our in-house crew, and so, we would have been the ones that would have had, um, the white paint outstriping. So, it's, it's pretty clear that it was not a city crew or our contractors.
Perfect. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for any other city staff in the council? Okay, seeing none, you, you have five minutes to provide a rebuttal if you would like to.
Um, no, my only rebuttal was the construction and the pavement, the new paving that had taken place, so I assume that paint was from that.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Hoffman? Okay, seeing none. Uh, essentially, what happens now is, uh, I'm going to ask if there's anyone else that wants to come speak, um, and if no one does, then we move into the voting session on this. Unless a council member votes to remove your claim, then it is left in, in the report of accepted claims. So, unless someone says that they're going to move to remove your claim, uh, and then, and that passes, then that would mean that, if we vote on it how it is now, it means that we did not accept, um, your case, essentially. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, all right. Uh, any further questions? Seeing none. Anyone else wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, uh, let's go ahead and move on into the voting session, then.
Item 3A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July 16th through July 31st, 2021, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Washington. Any discussion? Councilman Washington?
Ms. Hoffman, I want to thank you for taking the time. This takes a lot of effort to make a case, and I'm sorry that I'll be voting against your case, because I don't believe it was a city vehicle who dropped the paint, but I do feel bad that you had to pay for that yourself.
Thank you.
Any further? Any further comments at this time or discussion? Okay, uh, seeing none, let's please go ahead and call a vote.
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Moving on to section four, public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Item 4A is approving the transfer of unspent and unencumbered appropriations between certain capital improvement projects.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, Men Johnson, Lincoln Parks Recreation. Um, this is a standard part of the budget approval process, or budget review and approval process. At the end of each fiscal year, departments identify projects that may have negative balances, or projects that they, within the capital improvement program, or projects that they'd like to move funding between, and that's what we have that is part of this. This building, which is the new, uh, nature education building, out of the Pinehurst Park Nature Center, was constructed essentially a year ago. And, um, this is a building, we replaced a former building that built, pardon me, that burned in Wilderness Park. And so, what we're doing is, we had a couple of different appropriations that were built into this. All the expenditures came out of one fund, uh, but we did have some funding, we utilized some funding that would be ADA. This building is ADA accessible, and it also has, um, some sealed concrete flooring. And so, what we're doing is transferring funds from those CIP projects into the project that the expenditures were made out of, to clear out that negative balance. And I'd be happy to answer the questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Director Johnson at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
We'll be calling items 4B through 4H together. Item 4B is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 25.06, Lincoln Mechanical Code, to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Mechanical Code as amended, as part of the Lincoln Mechanical Code. 4C is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 25.12, to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Fuel Gas Code as amended, as part of the Lincoln Fuel Gas Code. Item 4D is amending the Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 20.14, to adopt the commercial provisions of the International Energy Conservation Code 2018 edition, as amended, as part of the Lincoln Energy Code. 4E is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 19.03, to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code as amended, as part of the Lincoln Fire Code. 4F is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 20.06, Lincoln Building Code, to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Building Code as amended, as part of the Lincoln Building Code. 4G is amending Title 20 of the Lincoln Municipal Code by adding a new chapter, 20.08, entitled Lincoln Existing Building Code, to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Existing Building Code as amended. And 4H, amending Title 19 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to fire prevention by repealing Chapter 19.08, entitled General Regulations in its entirety, by repealing Sections 19.08.010, 19.08.0220, 19.08.150, and 19.08.160, and by repealing Chapter 1910, entitled Building Exits in its entirety, by repealing Sections 1910.010, as the language is outdated and is covered with the 2018 International Fire Code Amendments to Lincoln, in Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 19.03, entitled Fire Code.
Thank you, Sony, for going through all of that. It's mouthful. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and council members, for this opportunity. Uh, this series of ordinances represents, um, a process that we go through usually approximately every three or so years, um, to adopt the next version of, um, our construction codes, our building construction codes. In this case, we are skipping a version, we're going from the 2012 version of the codes, in most cases, to the 2018 version, to be consistent, um, with the state code and to, bring it up to, uh, what is considered, uh, modern code adoption. Like the clerk mentioned, we are going to be adopting six different codes today. Um, there is the, uh, Lincoln Mechanical Code, adopting the International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, um, Lincoln Building Code, which is commercial buildings, and the International Existing Building Code. It is a new building, that is a new code that we will be adding, like, like it was read, to be consistent with the, uh, State Building Code. We're adopting the commercial provisions of the Energy Code as part of our Lincoln Energy Code that you, or some of you, adopted, um, last summer. Uh, the residential provisions for the, um, 2018 Energy Code, um, the Lincoln Fire Code, and then the re, the repeal of a couple of ordinances that have been in place since the 30s, and have definitely become obsolete and are covered in the, um, published adopted, uh, adopted codes. So, just want to talk a little bit about the process that we go through, um, each time. Uh, City Lincoln has a, um, has a staff of experts and our inspectors and, uh, the chiefs that go through, um, I added up all 2,000 pages worth of codes. Here's an example of one of the books, page by page, to look at the new, the new items, see if, uh, any of those are inappropriate for the city. We look at the existing amendments from the previous versions to make sure that they still apply to the new codes. And so, that process is, uh, months long for city staff to go through, uh, go through these codes. Once city staff is comfortable with their version and their recommendations for the, uh, amendments, we, we, um, use what we call the task forces, the code task forces. These, these groups are boards and committees made up of industry professionals. In the case of the Commercial Building Code, it's made up of design professionals, architects, engineers, um, locally, also contractors who, um, are involved in using the codes. And then also, we have a number of building operators that, uh, own and, um, operate buildings, uh, commercial buildings, involved in the task force. So, we bring, um, not only do they get, uh, one of these books for each of the codes, um, they also get the staff's recommended amendments to review at the same time. So, that group goes through these books in their entirety, plus the staff's recommended, uh, approve, or recommended, uh, amendments. As we go through, that task force formally offers up motions to adopt the amendments, if necessary, and they vote on roll call. And to my knowledge, there was, out of the, out of the probably hundreds of, um, motions, we probably might have had two or three that were not unanimous, um, approvals, uh, through that course. So, we feel very good about our process involving, um, the local industry professionals and, and folks. Obviously, we can't involve all of the contractors, all of the, um, design professionals, but, um, we have a, a good mix of, of folks to lend their expertise to the process. So, with that, we, um, have a few of our, uh, staff that were, um, involved in the process in the room. Uh, if there happen to be any technical, uh, technical questions that, that can help me out, they were, and a lot of it, I wanted to ask them to come down here just to kind of see the fruits of their effort over the past year, um, to bring this to conclusion. I guess with that, I can answer any questions about the process or any specific, uh, comments you may have had. I spoke with a number of you, as I, as I could, about some of the more, um, interesting, um, items, this code adoption. There really, uh, by and large, was not a lot of, uh, controversial items in terms of volume. There was a couple that generated some pretty good discussion, um, but, uh, there, by and large, it was a very easy review for staff and task force to, to, to get through. That, I, sir, answer any questions.
Any, uh, Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, this is, uh, a lot of work by a lot of people, and we know it's not easy work at all. Um, so, the process, so, we approve it today, goes up to the mayor to be signed, and then, when do these new codes go into effect?
Question, should have covered that. We have agreed to, uh, we built into each of these ordinances a future effective date to allow folks to digest them and, and prepare, and, um, in some cases, uh, July 3rd, I mean, January 3rd, 2022, to answer your question. Uh, January 3rd, 2022 would be the future effective date. Uh, the reason being, there's a number of large projects that may be under consideration at the time, maybe even partial design, that are under the pre, that the current version of the codes. And we wanted to build that in. I don't think we've done that before, so this is kind of a new, uh, new experiment or service, or however you want to look at it, um, to provide the, uh, local folks a chance to digest them and prepare their submittals, um, to either comply with the new, with the new codes coming up, or if they can get their codes or their permits applied for prior to that January 3rd time, we honor the previous, uh, previous codes. So, thank you.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes, um, I was going to call up Chief Inspector Moody, but I would like you to answer this instead. Do you have minutes to these meetings that she had?
We do have minutes to each and every meeting, they're recorded, and then also, we have, uh, summarized, uh, summarized meetings that I have made available on request, um, in, in the past, um, if, if you'd like.
If they are available, easily available, that would be great. I know...
They're in PDF, they're just in PDF, they're just in PDF format.
Yeah, that would be great, see how that went. Yeah, that would be great, to see how that went. And a big chunk of this is the fire, international new fire.
It's one of them, the International Fire Code, adopting the new, the new fire code.
Are we going to be requiring fire suspension systems in residential homes under this?
State statute prohibits us from doing that, even if we wanted to. Then that would be in the residential building code that was adopted last year with the appropriate deletion.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
We'll be calling items 4I, an ordinance to extend the term of the shared mobility device program, pilot program, and include Canopy Street and Pinnacle Arena Drive within the area where sidewalk riding is prohibited.
Good afternoon, Liz Elliott, Transportation Utilities Director. As you're all aware, we have, we are in about, I think it's month 11 of our pilot program for scooters. Last year was a unique year and not something we anticipated when we started the pilot program, with COVID-19 and the university not being fully on campus during the year. It didn't give us a good opportunity to really assess the program and see what does the program look like when we have students on campus and we are as much back to normal as possible. So what we are proposing here today is to extend this to the end of the calendar year. Under the current pilot program, it would go through, basically, the end of this month is when it would end. By extending it to the end of the calendar year, this does give us the opportunity to have the fall semester and to see how the program works with the university back in session and the students back on campus. It's not a long extension, but we believe it'll give us enough data and information to come back to you and you can have a better opportunity to fully assess the program. So that is the main change in this. The other change is more of a cleanup and clarification change, and that specifically states that they are not to be ridden on the sidewalks in the Canopy Street area. Our program, our permits, and what is told to the users is that they can't be on the sidewalks anywhere, but the ordinance seemed a little confusing because we referenced the bike prohibition on the sidewalks, but bikes are permissible under the current ordinance down in the, the Canopy area. So we just wanted to make it clear and clean it up, that it is clear, you cannot ride scooters on sidewalks anywhere here in Lincoln. So that was the other clarification. The third change in this is the end report at the end of the year was supposed to be 90 days after. We advanced that to 30 days. We felt that 90 days was too long and wanted to get you the report sooner, so you had that information and data to you and available. So those are the three significant changes in the ordinance. I will tell you that not, it's not technically part of the ordinance, but we also do want to do a change to the boundaries of where scooters are permitted. So, under the ordinance, it does give the director of L T U the ability to designate and clarify the bounds of where scooters can operate. Right now, we limited it, sorry, we limited it, this might not work with my iPad, so I apologize. Perfect, thank you, Roberto, for being prepared. So, right now, the red is the university, and scooters are prohibited from being on the university campus. This kind of green-blue area, that is the current boundaries of where scooters are permissible. What we are looking at and proposing to do would be expand just a little bit into the Telegraph District here, and then also between 11th and 18th down to C Street. That captures more of the university students, where they're residing, they can get to and from home, and the boundaries of the university as well as downtown work. We've also had a number of requests for the availability of scooters in the Telegraph District as well, so that is expanding that just slightly.
Any further, are you good?
No, nothing further, I'm open to questions.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you very much. Director Elliott, would you please explain just a little bit more about the expanded area? Are we looking at the entire orange areas?
It would be the entire orange areas, so here, excluding the city capital.
Okay.
And then, again, kind of the outlining of the orange, the university here on the far east is still prohibited. There is geofencing, so once you get past those prohibited areas, the scooters do stop running, and that is a, basically, a chip that each of the vendors have installed on their systems.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Chubb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is about the geofencing, Ms. Elliott. So the capital is geofenced off too now?
Yes, and I think that always has been the case. So both of the capital and the university have always been part of the excluded area on the geofencing.
Now, we're confused on the university. I was initially under the impression that they were prohibited on the sidewalks on the university, but is the whole campus area?
The whole campus area is prohibited. And so what we have tried to do is we have indicated designated parking spaces right on the edge of that, so people can drop their scooters there and then walk into the university. We do continue, and I say "we" very generously, meaning Roberto and Dan Carpenter, they do meet on a very regular basis with LPD, UNL, as well as the vendors. And the vendors have been very cooperative and have been very responsive to any issues or concerns that we have had.
Couple more things. I've seen the little don't know sidewalk, warning signs, the little Uber munchings on the sidewalk. Those are nice, but are there other efforts to explain to riders that would rather them not interact with pedestrians on the sidewalk?
We've done a number of different things to try and get the word out. When they are, when a user is going to sign up to start using the scooters, they are told there, it's written on or posted on the scooters as well, that they're not to be ridden on the sidewalks. We've also tried over the last year with, like, message boards and stuff along the sidewalks to indicate.
Notice those too.
On top of social media and those types of efforts. We also did do another educational event just about a month ago, down during the Haymarket, where both vendors were out educating the public on how to ride, the rules, those types of things as well. So we're, we're trying to get out there and get the message out. We're also working with the, the university and things like that on how to message to students.
I heard, a lot of people have approached me about these, and I, I do appreciate extending the trial a little longer, but there's still some issues about where riders are leaving them behind, as being a trip and fall hazard. There's some, talk about, I've had people ask me, can you do a docking station with them, like you do for bicycles? Has there been any conversation about corralling these things?
And I think there's some vendors here today, so they might be able to come up and answer more about what technology is available. There are, I believe, some options out there for some of the vendors that that might be an option, but right now, they are all dockless for our system. And we have tried to help, not only educate where people should be parking, but down in the Haymarket, because that was one of the areas of frustration, was the parking and concerns for safety for pedestrians. So we did go down and paint little corral areas where they can be placed, and I think that has helped. There are also some of those painted areas near the university as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman McGinnis?
Real quick, I appreciate all the work you and the staff has done. I like the idea of opening up those orange areas, and what I would like to see maybe is see if we start to use this for commuters, for people that live in these areas, because right now, there's very little, I say housing in the green area. So now, I noticed a lot in other cities where people will use them to commute to and from work a lot. And with the Telegraph District opening up all their departments down there, and then going south, I say south of the capital, is where a lot of the students live, and I have a feeling we'll see a lot of them start to use them for commuting purposes instead of trying to find parking spaces everywhere. You're right, the corrals have helped a lot in the Haymarket area. I think people are trying to pay, and trying to do the right thing with them. Of course, there's always going to be some that will just dump them wherever, but it doesn't seem as bad. I work downtown and such, and it doesn't seem as bad. You'll still see them on the sidewalks, though, and I see a lot of bikers, and I see a lot of skateboarders all over the sidewalks also. So it's not just the scooters that are, are doing that. But no, I, I'm excited to see how this will be helpful and, and seeing if we start to use this for commuter, instead of just joyriding.
And I have had a few people reach out that during the legislative session, they would take, they work downtown in the Haymarket or downtown, and they've taken it down to the state capital, because this parking's too difficult. So I do know there are more of those users out there than we are probably aware of.
Good. Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Elliott and staff. It's been a lot of work during a pandemic to do a pilot project of this nature. So we had almost introduced a food truck pilot program and then also, and we had to back that up, so maybe we'll get there. And here we are again with higher numbers. So just a couple of quick questions. Also, support the extension of the program, because I think it's important to get the right data, and we need some more time with the students back. I like the expanded map, I also think that's important. I'm sure it goes without saying, but I'll ask anyway. I assume then we'll have more docks and everything in the expanded area to accommodate for more scooters in the Telegraph District and as we expand our boundaries.
You mean docks, are you saying?
Or racks, wherever they can leave their scooters.
Because these are dockless, there aren't docks. But one thing that we could look into is doing some of the markings that we've done in the Haymarket. That could be something that we could do in those areas.
Wrong word, there I go, creating things that don't exist. It's been happening many years. Thank you for that answer, because I'm sure that's something that we might hear about. I support it, I think it's great to have it down in the Telegraph District, and like Councilman McGinnis, I think that would be great, as we put housing down there to have, for people to have a way to get around. And I know Councilman Chubb has ridden scooters everywhere. I hope it was legal. I don't know if he were legal. No, it would have died. So, so my other question goes back to safety, because those are the things we hear about, although I haven't for a long, long time. But when initially, and you'll remember this, I know, I heard a lot from Haymarket, how people who live in the Haymarket and housing down there. And one of their concerns at that time was that young people had found a way early, early on to ride scooters in the garages, because there were some really great slopes, right, for young people? And they could really get their speed up and on a scooter. And I know it sounds like a daredevil to me, but, so, you and I talked about that, I think, and so I think signs were going to go up or, but I guess, my question is, is it still happening, or, or how have we prevented that? Because obviously, as far as my traffic goes, that has quieted down. So could you talk about some of the safety things you've initiated in garages or Haymarket?
And I will also invite Roberto Partita to come up. He's the ultimate expert and has all of the data, so I'll have him come up. But you are correct that we did have a number of those concerns early on. Roberto in particular was very proactive and taking steps to meet with not only the garages, but also groups down in the Haymarket. And I think they've tapered off, but I will let Roberto tell you.
Yes, hello. They have tapered off. One of the initial things that I coordinated with both Bird and Spin, the two operators here in Lincoln, was to essentially geofence initially the parking ramps that were in question whenever I received feedback from the public, and then from there, slowly geofence the rest of them. And if there are any parking ramps that haven't been geofenced, if I receive something from someone, fortunately, some of the, all of the parking ramps have camera capabilities. So what folks don't realize is they're on video, and there's a timestamp and location. So I have been able to work with either Bird or Spin to identify said users and suspend them from the app, so that they're no longer able to kind of partake in those activities. And moving forward, no scooter rider is able to enter into the parking ramps.
Thank you very much. That should do it, right? Camera, camera, every time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman McGinnis? I'm sorry, Councilman Beck, yes?
Yes, Director Elliott or Roberto, could you maybe email me a, a map of the new expanded area?
Yes.
Just for my reference?
We will definitely do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is Vince Orxalas. My address is 802 Pierce Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108. I am the Senior Operations Manager for Spin, one of the operators participating in the pilot program here in Lincoln. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve the residents, visitors, and students here in Lincoln, so thank you. We support the extension of the pilot program, obviously, right? And we, we really support the expansion of the service area. The current area is very small, so we would like to see more data as well. Spin is committed to providing safe, innovative, and affordable mobility services here in Lincoln. We employ a W2 in-house staff to manage our entire operation, and that means that the team members who pick up, charge, and maintain the Spin scooters, all are in-house employees, and any full-timers have benefits, okay? We believe our investment in a W2 workforce translates to a higher-quality product. And we've worked closely with the local community and the city to adjust operations after receiving feedback. Roberto and team is, have, have been outstanding. We've also voluntarily run a campaign against sidewalk riding. We know that that's dangerous, so we have put the stickers on our scooter handlebars. We were the ones that put the A-frame boards out there. We routinely push out messages, email messages to our user base with their email address saying, "Please, don't, don't ride on sidewalks." We've also worked with city and local businesses to just remind people of the rules, and we follow up whenever we can. Our parking, our system actually requires users to take pictures when they do a parking job, so we review those, and we don't get to review all thousands of them, but we go through a good, good percentage of them, and when we see poor parking jobs, you know, blocking maybe, you know, the right-of-way on the sidewalk, or, or a handicap ramp, or, or something of that nature, or doorway, we'll reach back out to that user and say, "Hey, that wasn't a good parking job, don't do that again." If we continue to see the user do that, then we'll just ban them from our app entirely. So, so we do make an effort to make sure people try to park them correctly. And if you are interested in hubs, you know, for these things, sort of like docking hubs, our best example nearest by would be Creighton University in Omaha. We have a, we have a hub there where the scooters can be parked and charged. Roberto created the spots around town for parking like corrals, which are great. We can also incentivize people to park there, so we can say, "Hey, as we expand our service area, here's a parking spot. Dollar off your ride if you park here." So we can try to incent people to go to those places, too. Again, thank you for your consideration this afternoon. We look forward to continuing work in partnership with the city, and I offer myself as a resource if you have any questions, and thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to come and speak on this? Seeing none, if you'd like to go ahead and close out, Director Elliott?
Thank you. I just wanted to know, we, Bird representatives were not able to be here this afternoon, but they did send us a letter asking that they fully support the extension and are asking the council to extend it as requested here. So with that, I will submit it.
Councilman McGinnis?
Real quick, Omaha still has a scooter program currently? Is it under, is it still a trial, or is it a full-fledged?
Did you still have the program? I don't know if they necessarily considered a pilot program at this point.
It's a full-fledged program now?
Thank you. I manage both the Omaha and Lincoln markets. It is now a five-year program with a one-year review, so each competitor has a review yearly for that permit to continue.
How many competitors are there?
There are two, Spin and Lime.
Okay.
And we're permitted to have 1,000 scooters each in town. That's, that's the max.
Any further questions? Councilman Chubb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You said 1,000 scooters, is that just in the downtown area, or is, how is it?
That's between north, south Omaha and the downtown area. So, so if you imagine, north to about where the airport is, south to... So if you imagine north to about where the airport is, south to like L Street, and then to the west to like, to like 72nd Street.
Three separate areas.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much, Director Elliott. Thank you so much for coming down to speak. Okay, let's go ahead and move on. Or is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? No, we already did that, so we're going to close out. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
Item 4J, approving a state sales agreement between the city and 2201 North Cotner LLC for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 2201 North Cotner Boulevard, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development. Maybe we'll, we'll, what, we have a property at 2201, and my emails go back to August of last year, but I think building and safety's emails probably go back farther. This property had issues that resulted in some building and safety demolition dollars going in on the corner there. And then earlier this, after August of last year, we acquired the rest of the parcel. In February, we went through a surplusing process internally, then brought that before this body, surplus the property. We received offers, we received a, a number of offers. We really received what we would consider about three credible offers. This one was the highest offer that was received. And what they're proposing to do here is a couple of small shops on the first floor and then condos on the second and third floor. There isn't a restriction that that's what they have to do, but I think that's their proposal. We've vetted that through the planning department to see if the zoning and those would allow this building to go in there, and the answer was yes. So we would recommend we move forward on this and accept the sale at $81,000.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Oh, Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yeah. You said that there is no requirement that they need to do that project, but that's their proposal that they would like to do at this point?
Well, we, yes, we don't, we did not, in some cases, we've put stipulations that they have to do that. We have, I think that's they go through and do the financing, they don't have a redevelopment agreement with us, they don't have the other things. This is a, in essence, a straight land purchase for $81,000.
Yeah, one other thing, one little note that you, my wife, Councilwoman Bowers, is that area is called Bethany Heights. The reason it's called Bethany Heights, it's the highest point of ground within miles of that area. And this sits right on the very tip of the high point, so a good spot to have a good three-story apartment building.
Yeah, I would agree. The people that are doing it have done proposals on other projects around Lincoln. I don't think they're a large developer, but they work in small areas. And I think that hopefully they can follow through and provide this. The rest of an additional property tax would go on the rolls once the building was in was something on the order of $30,000.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Director Marvin. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on.
Move on to Section 5, which is our Ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item 5A is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 5.39.020, short-term rental license required prohibited, prohibited conduct to extend the effective date to September 2021. For short-term rental licenses to be required, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please do a roll call vote?
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chubb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.62.040, household living use group to extend the effective date to September 2021. For short-term rental, consists to be a condition of short-term rental use, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please do, oh, seeing none, may I please do a roll call vote?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Chubb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5C is approving addendum number one to ground lease for site number 2850, agreement between the airport authority, the Lincoln, the City of Lincoln, and the County of Lancaster to add the County of Lancaster as a tenant in common with the city, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion?
I think this is a great agreement. I'm glad to see all of us working together. Perfect.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Chubb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5D is change of zone 15016C, application of Lucille Park LLC to lay out of lots one and two and block three, with waivers to reduce setbacks on property legally described as Outlot C and the existing Wilderness Creek PUD on property generally located at South 40th Street and Yankee Hill Road, introduced by McGinnis.
Would somebody be willing to introduce? Moved. Moved by Councilwoman Chubb. Seconded by Councilwoman Ward.
Yes, I'm going to declare a potential conflict of interest and refrain from voting or discussing this item.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Councilwoman Chubb, seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Are there any discussions? Okay, seeing none, may we please call a roll call?
Ward?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Chubb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Do you want to go get Councilwoman McGinnis, Councilwoman Beckus, or Councilwoman Raybold?
Is it courtesy there? Yeah.
Item 5E is annexation 20006, application of DNR Development and KDS Investments LLC to annex approximately 18.04 acres of property generally located at Southwest 56th and O Streets, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call?
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chubb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5F is change of zone 20011, application of DNR Development and KDS Investments LLC for a change from AG Agriculture District to H3 Highway Commercial District, and from AG Agriculture District to I-1 Industrial District, non-property generally located at Southwest 56th and O Street, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call a roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Chubb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5G is approving the conditional annexation agreement between the city, KDS Investments LLC, and DNR Development, Inc., to annex approximately 18.04 acres on property generally described as South, Southwest 56th Street and West O Street, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Chubb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5H is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 14.50.030, licensees in Sections 14.50.040, application for permit, context to remove the sale of alcohol conditions for sidewalk cafes, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved. Thank you. Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. I'm only going to do my speech once because we were doing this on 5H and 5I, so just copy and repeat this in your head. Thank you for your attention today regarding sidewalk cafes and the interest in looking at ways to make our city more vibrant, strengthen our economy, make our streets safer, and allow businesses to grow in a pandemic. Business leaders, community leaders, and young professionals have been reaching out for years to expand an opportunity that is currently available to only some of Lincoln's establishments. Currently, an establishment is able to apply for a sidewalk cafe permit if 60% of their sales revenue comes from food. This allows businesses to utilize public space as a sidewalk at cafe after meeting certain requirements. Applying for this permit follows a process that keeps our city safe and establishments accountable. This process includes an application that has hours and days, how the extended premises will be used, a plan for supervision and maintenance, description of how, or description and a photo of how furniture, the number of patrons, and what food and drink will be offered, and a statement that the applicant, applicant will hold harmless to the city of Lincoln. This application goes through a review that it consists of several members of our cities, of our city staff, including the Health Department, Planning Department, Department of Transportation, the Police Department, Urban Development, Fire Prevention, and Urban Design Committee for Recommendation. All this does is seeks to remove one simple requirement. Businesses still have to meet this process, still have to meet construction requirements for the cafes, which include screening, and have to pass city instructions. Bars, as well as restaurants, must get an annual permit, and that can be revoked at any time if problems occur. Generally speaking, this proposal, after years of discussion, allows for, for establishment to apply for a permit under the mayor's executive order and removes the food sales regulation. All the regulations to protect our community will remain in place. The application, the review, and the agreement that the establishments will hold harmless to city. The mayor signed an executive order for dine-out in response to the pandemic. This seeks to extend that opportunity to others in our city. We must act now in order to avoid missing the end of the mayor's executive order. We've heard from community leaders like Todd Ogden about how this will make our city more vibrant. We've heard from businesses like Melnet that this will help our city attack, attract, and retain young professionals. We've heard from business owners like Scott from Duffy's, Serena from The Hot Mess, about how this will help them recover from the economic impacts of the pandemic. And we've heard from organizations like Lincoln Young Professionals in South of Downtown about how this will strengthen our culture and connection to our city. We must be dedicated to making sure our municipal code keeps up the times, and we cannot keep outdated ordinances or regulations just because that's the way it's always been. A constituent wrote in, and I want to read part of her email from Ann Hunter Pertle. Beyond COVID, this is a small step Lincoln can take toward embracing being a vibrant city for young adults. Does it really matter? Yes. Because to attract and retain the younger people in Lincoln that Lincoln says it wants, it has to be more than just a place to live. It also has to be fun. We have to do more than say we want to help businesses. We have to do more than saying we want our kids to stay in Lincoln for their careers and families. We have to do more than say we want our city to feel connected. We have to take tangible steps in allowing sidewalk cafes, as Ms. Hunter Pertle said, a step in the right direction. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Councilwoman Chubb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I do understand the reasons why, and, and, and I do have some small concerns, but they're very small. I'd like to talk today about the permitting process, and there's a couple of places in the ordinance that are confusing to me. We have a small conversation about, on the bottom of page two, on line 17 and line 23. It discusses furniture, and there's a two-word phrase that says, line 15, two, line 15 begins, "Description of permitted advertising and description or photo of street furniture to be used, comma, if any." And there's another section that says the same thing. Well, on line 17, it talks about, it says during the application process, you must tell us how many patrons, the maximum number you must accommodate. While, most of the people that testified, and most of the email I got, everyone discussed their desire for a sidewalk cafe, which in my mind says tables and chairs. But both lines 16 and line 23 say if any, some would imply that you're not really required to have tables and chairs. Am I overthinking this?
I would say I would think so. It appears that the intent of this is not to have beer gardens in front of establishments outside, but instead to have a sidewalk cafe where patrons can sit and drink and eat.
So the language, I guess I'm going to say, I'm the only one concerned that the if any is kind of an else, so you don't have to have tables and chairs? I'm over, I'm overreading.
I would say, I would think, I would think so. And, you know, if, over the next year, if there is an issue that comes up, this is something that the council can definitely take on and address. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the same concerns as Councilwoman Chubb. I actually, I read if any meaning that it's optional. And where we had definitions early on in the ordinance, it does not define street furniture. And so I did have a question about street furniture, tables and chairs. I am in favor of caf sidewalk cafes, but I would like the ordinance to be very clear as we're moving forward. May we be our city attorney to come forward?
Yohannsey Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10. I think we have Mr. Marvin here as well, who might also be available to answer some questions. I think that we, tables and chairs are generally required, and if we go, yeah, that's what I was going to, thank you, 4.5.06, the permit conditions, which is the rest of the code, which I believe Mr. Marvin has put up. Thank you. Actually, there is other language, and it should be at the end, what is that, Q, that actually does require?
Q, all sidewalk cafes shall be located only in the exact location described in the approved application.
Oh, I'm sorry, R.
Approved, yeah, approved furnishings included in the number of tables and chairs to be provided, may not be modified. And then the last, ours is, "Service of food and/or drinks in all sidewalk cafes shall be limited to persons seated at tables in the sidewalk cafe."
And so there is actually a requirement.
There is.
So when they go through the process, it's in there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Is that answered?
I will.
Awesome. Councilwoman Washington?
I'd just like to just bring up one item. I don't think it's going to change this, but I wanted to acknowledge that during the hearing last week, someone asked that this program be extended to private, to proprietors operating restaurants or bars on private property entirely. And I just wanted to note that they have the ability to extend their liquor license today to an area outdoors and not necessarily on city property. And so they have that right, right now. And so for those folks who are out there wondering if this can also be extended to private property, I wanted them to know it already is available.
Perfect. Thank you so much for clarifying that, Councilwoman. Any further discussion or comments at this time? Councilwoman Beckus?
Yes, I'll just comment that I'll be voting in support of these changes. It's time to move Lincoln in a smart and sensible direction in regards to updating codes and regulations that have been overlooked for a number of years. So I'll be in support of this.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I too will be in support of this, and I do look forward to enjoying a nice glass of Chardonnay outside and in some wonderful facility. So it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Any further, Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to add, yeah, I think this is a good idea. I really appreciate Councilwoman Bowers bringing it forward. I appreciate the attention to detail that our ILC members remind us of.
But I do think it levels the playing field between downtown Lincoln and our Hay Market. And I think, yeah, I think that's important for us to do, especially as our downtown businesses, bars, and restaurants are climbing their way out of COVID. It's one more thing that we can do to make Lincoln even more fun than it already is. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion or comments? I want to, as a closing statement, I just want to thank everyone on the council for their hard work and trying to figure out a way to move this forward and have a conversation about it and in a way that is thoughtful and deliberative. And so I'm so appreciative of everyone sharing their concerns and working to try to make this happen. May we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 5I is amending Section 5.04.020, the Lincoln Municipal Code, relating to alcoholic liquor definitions to change beer garden and sidewalk cafe definitions and repealing Sections 5.04.020 as her to existing, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's do it one more time. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Beckus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Our next, Section 6 Resolutions, first reading are items 6A through 6E. Ordinance's first reading and related resolutions are items 7A through 7G. Our pending list dates certain are items 8A through 8J. And our pending list items are 9A through 9C.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Moved and seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please do a roll call vote?
Ward? Beckus?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yeah.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.